John.
Good evening, everybody, and I should have said this earlier, but if you have a cellphone, please make sure to mute it or any other electronic device that may make a noise. Thank you for showing up on behalf of the City of Las Cruces and the Las Cruces Police Department. We appreciate you showing up and showing concern for our city, so thank you very much. We're going to have Chief Story coming up here in just a bit, but we also have four other speakers who will be presenting today, and I wanted to introduce them. First Lieutenant Joy Whittala, she is with our Community Outreach Office. And also speaking today will be Nicole Martinez, who is on her way as we speak. She's the Executive Director of the Mesia Valley Community of Hope. Logan Howard is here. Logan, thank you for showing up. He's a community organizer for FYI Plus. And then also Pamela Angel, who is the coordinator for the Amador Health Center. So thank you to all you for being here, too. After all of our presenters, you, the audience, will be able to ask questions. We ask if at all possible, please remain on topic, because our topic today is the unhoused population that we have here. And we'll have Q and A after, so jot down your questions as we go, and then whoever is best suited to answer that question will answer that question. Let me start off with Chief of the Las Cruces Police Department, Jeremy Story.
Thank you, Dan. Good evening. I appreciate the turnout for this town hall. This is our third town hall that we've done. We did two last year, and this is the first for 2024. The first two, we did a lot of informing, a lot of talking, trying to lay out some of the things we're already doing, some of the plans we had, and the last one is recorded on YouTube. So we felt like, at this point, what we need to do is transition to themes and try to actually accomplish something with our town halls, other than just talking and informing. So we put out an Instagram poll and a question on Facebook, and it was pretty overwhelming that people wanted to talk about homelessness, so that was selected as our first topic for 2024. Before I do that, I want to just spend a very short amount of time giving some updates that I think are relevant and important, and I'll start with the QR code up here. We'll take you to our transparency page if you haven't seen it. It's always been updated. There's a lot of information on that, probably too much, but it will answer some of the questions that people tend to have. First thing I want to update is just our calls for service. 2022, well, I won't give the numbers, but we had about a 14,000 call increase from 2022 to 2023, so we saw higher calls for service in 2023. Along with that, we saw a little bit higher incident reports, about 500 higher incident reports than the year before. One thing I think that's important to highlight that is a positive number, a positive trend, is we actually had a 21% reduction in uses of force from 2022 to 2023. Now, keep in mind, uses of force is a wide spectrum. That's anything from force stabilization, noncompliant handcuffing, to tasered, other intermediate force, all the way up to deadly force. The vast majority, or say the high percentage, are on the lower end of that spectrum, but even so, having a 21% reduction is significant. This might be hard for you guys, I apologize. It will be on the recording. This is kind of a snapshot of our end-of-year crime report for 2023. I want to highlight a couple of things. The first thing I want to highlight is we had an 18% reduction in violent crime, which is significant and something to celebrate. Although the numbers, as you'll see in a minute, are still higher than we would like compared to, let's say, five years ago, that's still a positive trend, and that's what we want to continue. You'll also see that we had a 2% reduction in property crime, which doesn't sound like much, but I'm going to give you, hopefully, some context here soon, why that's still a win. That doesn't mean we're out of the woods. That doesn't mean we don't have a lot of work left to do, but it's, hopefully, a positive trend in the right direction. And an overall reduction in crime for both property and violent, a 4%. And when I compare these side by side, the left one is the end of 2022 report, so that's 2021 to 2022 versus 2022 to 2023, and it's difficult for some of you guys to see it, but what I want to highlight is at the end of last year, I'm sorry, at the end of 2022, we had a 23% increase in all crime over 2021 compared to a 4% reduction in all crime for this last year. So it's definitely a positive result that we should celebrate, but then we need to continue that effort in 2024. And these next two sides will paint that picture better. This is the five-year trend from 2019 to 2023 for violent crime. You kind of see how it crept up, and we're hopefully starting to come down the other side of that peak. That's the goal. For property crime, it's even more substantial. You see that climb up the mountain, and we don't see as much of a decrease, but our hope is that we still, we peaked in 2022, and with the efforts we have in 2024, the collaboration and teamwork we have, we can continue that decrease on property crime to get us much closer to where we were in 2019. Real quick training updates. I'm going to do them by quarter, so this is some of the things we have planned for January through March of this year. As a refresher, in-service is, in-service training is training that's required of all officers or the vast majority of officers. We just completed High Risk Ops Refresher this month. We started our monthly control tactics training. That will be every month for all uniformed officers. We'll also begin our firearms and scenario-based training refresher, and that will happen every month throughout most of the year through October, and that will be half-day of firearms and half-day of scenario-based training, which is where officers take all the skills, all those topics, and try to combine them in a realistic setting. So applying search and seizure, law, legal information to defensive tactics, or investigations, or de-escalation, and trying to actually put those pieces together in something that replicates real life as best we can. Search and seizure update, that's taught by our police legal advisor, who's a licensed attorney. That's actually happening this week, so it's about half-done. We have more classes tomorrow and Friday, and that's an update on case law that's come out in the last six to eight months that officers need to know. And then he'll also be teaching our Use of Force Part One for the year in March. Advanced training, as a refresher, is training that not all officers go through. This is above and beyond all the in-service training we do, the briefing training, the team training. Instructor development already happened this year for new instructors. That's required by the state. The Dona Anna Community College is hosting or doing a first-line supervisor, not a fifth-line supervisor, class, and we'll have several LCPD officers and sergeants in that class, which is my preference. There's many people that do the first-line supervisor class, but I think going through the branch supports the branch and our community. It earns them three college credits, and it's a good form, a good way to do it, a good structure. Blue to Gold was brought in. They're actually here today and tomorrow to teach these three classes: Real World De-escalation, Bulletproof Report Writing, and Duty to Intervene. Excellence in Police Training will be happening early next month. We've already brought it in once. It's really a science-based, applying what we know about learning in general and specifically for police, and how do we structure our training, our curriculum, and how we actually execute those training programs to be as effective as possible. And he'll also be teaching Dare to Be Great Leadership, which I'm excited about. And then the last thing we're hosting between now and March is our School of Resource Officer Training. It's additional week of training, 40 hours, that's required by statute, that they do every year. We're bringing in the Public Safety Psychological Group to conduct that training this year. We are doing, the goal is, two citizens academies this year. One will start February 15th. We'll be going through those applications this week, and we have an encouraging amount of applications, so we're looking forward to that one, and the plan is to do a second one in the fall. And then ultimately, the topic that was chosen was homelessness in Las Cruces, and that's why we're here. I'm very grateful to our community partners that did not have to be here to help us with this, but did not hesitate to say yes, and so we have Community of Hope, FYI Plus, and Amador Health Clinic that are all here. The goal, again, is to have discussion at the end, but before we do that, I want to set the foundation as best I can, because for us to talk about where do we need to go from here, we have to have a better understanding of where we already are, what's already being done, what programs are in place, and whether you agree or disagree with those programs, it's important to know what's already being done by all these groups in Las Cruces. And with that, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Joy Whittala, who's among the many sections in charge of our Community Outreach Section that deals with these issues a lot. Dan.
Thank you, Chief. And I will echo what the chief said. It is good to see everybody here tonight. First off, we're going to be discussing, again, our community initiatives and how they relate to our unhoused population. As a reminder, I want to go over what the police role and responsibility is. First and foremost, it's to investigate criminal activity. So it is not a crime to be unhoused. It is a crime to, for instance, cause criminal damage to property. As police officers, that is our role, that is our responsibility, regardless, again, of whether a person is unhoused or not. It's to investigate that criminal activity, it's to follow through with potential charges when there is probable cause, and that probable cause exists, and then it is to refer to services when possible. This is a changing dynamic with police departments across the country. So in other words, we're taking a look at bigger issues, bigger problems, and really complicated concerns here. So it is one thing to follow through with charging of the crime, but it's another thing to look at the actual person that is involved in the crime, and this is, again, where we can work in collaboration and, again, communicate and keep having those conversations with the groups that we're working in our community with. When it comes to the Las Cruces Police Department, we do have certain initiatives that are going on that do assist in us when it comes to that criminal activity occurring within those unhoused population groups. One of the initiatives that we do have is our Neighborhood Watch Groups. This is a group that will meet specifically in an IDed area within the city. When this initiative first started, we had seven Neighborhood Watch Groups. We are now up to 24 active Neighborhood Watch Groups. They will come up with a group coordinator that's from that neighborhood, and then they come up with a community platform. What they do is they have meetings, they set goal, and one of those goals is a lot of information sharing. So in other words, what's taking place in our neighborhood? What concerns do we have? Is there criminal activity occurring? And then let's report that criminal activity. What we do is we'll have community outreach officers respond to those Neighborhood Watch Groups and actually go to those meetings. And then on top of that, it really comes down to, are we tracking something that is of concern and suspicious, or is this of concern and criminal, and is this something that we need to get the police department related to? But again, it's another way to look at the issues in these neighborhoods and potentially generate new ideas and potential non-traditional solutions. We also have one business watch group that is meeting. Same thing, same initiatives, where it's, again, identifying the stakeholders and then realizing what the goals are, and then trying to come up with generating new ideas and new solutions to those concerns. Environmental design meetings. These are security assessments. This is something that our Community Outreach Officers can do for the businesses out there. What it is, is they will go through, actually respond to your businesses. They'll take a look at different areas. They'll take a look at, for instance, your surroundings. They'll take a look at the lights, the trees, the alleyways, any kind of video surveillance. They're going to take a look at your interior. They're going to take a look at the entrances, the aisles, the bathrooms, the exteriors, the doors, the windows, the roofs. They're going to take a look at the materials, what you have as far as checkouts, as far as safes, all of that kind of stuff, and they're going to give you possible recommendations. Again, those are security assessments and, again, recommendations on environmental designs. Finally, another initiative that we've incorporated is Bridging the Badge. Bridging the Badge has been an initiative where we know that these, again, concerns are complicated, and any kind of complicated concern does take a community to address. And so I like saying that when it comes to our Bridging the Badge, we are using the three Cs of remaining curious, staying connected, and making sure that we're contributing. With that, the goal is to educate the public in reference to what our community is doing. So what Bridging the Badge is, is every Wednesday, once a month, we are going live through Zoom and on Facebook Live to address the community in reference to a concern. For instance, last month, it was in reference to Crisis Intervention, where we had Officer Lucy Milks join us, and then we also had Paul Ford from the Fire Department join us, and they discussed things like Crisis Intervention, MIH, and our light unit through the Fire Department. Again, we're highlighting and educating, hopefully, the community to address what we're doing regarding the concerns that are out there. If you haven't seen it, our next one will be live February 21st, and it is going to be on the Veteran Services. Other initiatives that we've taken, I like to call these the force multipliers in crime prevention initiatives, because what they are is, as police officers and as an agency, we only have so many officers, and we can't be at all places all at the same time. And so what we've done is come up with what we call, again, different kind of crime prevention force multipliers. So for instance, we have business decals, where if you have a business and your business has cameras, we can have you place the sticker on that business that says, guess what? These cameras are going to be, like, totally accessible to LCPD anytime that I want to give them access to it. Those are available to those businesses. We also have prevention signs, the lock your car, take your keys, hide your things. Again, sometimes what we like to do is to remind the public that some crimes are crimes of opportunity. In other words, if I see a car and it's not locked, that's an opportunistic crime, especially when there's a person in the front seat. So again, prevention-wise, we're putting up signs in those parking lots to say, please, everybody, take your items, hide your items, lock your cars. Another force multiplier is our surveillance trailers. You've probably seen them throughout the city. We like to put these in our hotspot locations, and they do, they act as a deterrent, but not only that, if a crime does occur while the trailers are there, we can go back and look for that footage. We've also now incorporated illegal encampment tags. What these tags are, is when we are having, yes, it is typically the unhoused population group criminally trespassing in certain areas and setting up encampments. For a while there, what we were discovering is that we could go to these encampments and try to make contact with the individuals that were living in them, but they wouldn't be there, and so officers would go, they wouldn't be there. They'd go, they wouldn't be there. And again, us looking at bigger picture, these are the belongings that they have and potentially the only belongings that they have, and knowing that we don't necessarily want to just have them removed and then miss their belongings, we want to make sure that we're giving them notifications. So as part of that process, now, when an officer does show up and there isn't an illegal encampment, it's actually being able now to attach that tag to say, hey, officers were here, you're not allowed here. And on these illegal encampment tags, we actually do then, as part of the resources on the tags, give the outreach numbers that they can reach out to if they are having issues and they are looking for shelter or if they are unhoused. And finally, one that I'm super excited about is our community advocates and the initiative that we're having with them. So community advocates started back in 2021 as part of the LCPD CARES program. The mission then was to unite community with police, building relationship-based languages, connecting with community through outreach, critical incident after care, supportive advocacy, and continued education. It's cultivating community through caring, compassionate connections. That's a lot of Cs. Cultivating community through caring, compassionate connections. So with that, our community advocates, again, were part of our Bridging the Badge initiatives, but on top of that, they're also part of ongoing initiatives as we have now hired two additional and are actually looking for a third one and in the process of interviews. If I could have Alicia and Belinda stand up, and I forewarned them that I would embarrass them, but they are new community advocates and joining the LCPD CARES program and specifically looking at branching that gap between law enforcement and the activities that, as a role and responsibility I have as a police officer, and potentially other concerns that we need to address within our community. So for instance, one of the things that they are primarily doing is going to be follow-ups. And for instance, I might have an officer respond to a theft, like a simple theft, and maybe, like, somebody stole their guardrails. Okay, we'll respond, but maybe while the officer is there, the officer notes that, man, it's a struggling family, and they're having a hard time putting food on the table. As an officer, I still have my roles and responsibilities that I need to get to. However, now, having the community advocates on our team, that officer can reach out to them to say, hey, while I was with this family, they talked to me about having concern because one of them just, like, apparent-wise lost their job. Like, do you have any resources? Why, yes. And so our community advocates are going to be that bridge into the resources within our community. And again, it can be something like that, but it can also be something as serious as a critical incident, where when you study critical incidents, the serious nature of them is, it multiplies. It has a ripple effect throughout the whole community. So not only is it the family that's involved, but it can be, again, extensive throughout that whole community group. One of the examples we use is it could be a teenager choosing, unfortunately, to commit suicide, where, yes, that family, obviously, it's a tragic situation. With that, it's more than the family, it's typically the community that's affected as well, and this is where, again, our community advocates are going to come into play, where they can, again, hopefully, bridge the services on over to the individuals that are involved. And so reaching out, collaborating with our community to be able to say, hey, I heard this occurred, I understand that this is a really hard time, you know, in Cruces, we have these grief counselors, if you're interested. Again, part of the initiatives with the community advocate is going to be follow-up. Part of it is going to be the education piece, where, again, they are collaborators when it comes to our Bridging the Badge and the episodes that we've already done. And again, it's going to be, I guess, keeping it dynamic as we go and changing it as we go, and to make sure that we keep in the partnerships and to have the conversations that we need to have in order to look at the solutions when we're thinking bigger picture. Also, one of the reasons why we're here tonight, why the chief is having the town halls, is, again, to be focused on bigger-picture solutions and how we can come together as a community in order to make that happen. The community advocates like to use a dots expression, where one of their goals is developing open team strategies. Again, that's developing open team strategies, and this, again, they like to say it's connecting the dots, developing open team strategies, connecting the dots, get it? And so, again, I'm excited to have them with us, and I look forward to more to come. With that, that's a little bit about the initiatives the Community Outreach Section is taking, and then with that, I will be introducing the Executive Director of the Mesia Valley Community of Hope, Nicole Martinez, who actually was on Bridging the Badge as well recently.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Chief Story, for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Nicole Martinez. I'm the Director of the Mesia Valley Community of Hope, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about, highlight some of the programs that we have at Community of Hope and how we're addressing homelessness and people who are near homeless. So we're started out as a day shelter for people who are unhoused and seeking things like showers, clothing, restrooms, some basic needs, and we still provide that service today for our unhoused population. Over the years, we've realized that while that's really important to meet people where they're at and meet people's basic needs, that we really needed to evolve our programming to try to end homelessness as best we can. So we started doing housing programs. We have intensive case management, income support programs, and temporary shelter at Camp Hope. And last year, we served 7,258 people. Some of the housing programs that we have range all the way from one month of a security deposit or first month's rent to rapid rehousing, taking people from literal homelessness and helping them find an apartment, doing case management and home visits, making sure that their wraparound needs are met. We also have permanent supportive housing, that's for people who are chronically homeless, people who have been on the streets a number of years and who have a permanent disability. We also have eviction prevention, and we received a lot of extra eviction prevention funding during COVID times, that people that were, found themselves unemployed, needing assistance and paying their rent, we were able to step up and served over 1,000 more people with that assistance. We also, this last year, partnered with Behavioral Health Services Division in the state of New Mexico to assist people with opioid use disorder and also people exiting from incarceration, to help them with case management and with their housing needs. Over the last few years, we partnered with the City of Las Cruces to provide an outreach team so that we could assist our community partners, like law enforcement, codes, businesses, residents, who found that there were encampments cropping up on their property. So we have two people on our outreach team right now. We're really hopeful to expand that program so that we can have people go out to encampments that might be unsanctioned throughout our community, or anybody who seems like they might be unhoused or need services, try to get them to the Community of Hope and connected with other partners in our community. We also serve our homeless and near-homeless veterans. We assist the Mesia Valley Public Housing Authority in managing an apartment complex that transitions veterans who have experienced homelessness into their own apartments, and it serves 22 people. We serve many more veterans than that. Last year, we served over 400 veterans who were either homeless or on the brink of homelessness. We also partner with Behavioral Health Services Division to provide therapy for any of the veterans that walk through our doors. In 2011, we started Camp Hope, which is an overnight shelter for people who are unhoused. Again, just an example of something that showed that we were willing to go above and beyond what the design capacity had been for the Community of Hope, but we knew that it was an immediate need in our community and that we needed to provide some sheltering in our backyard, close to infrastructure, close to housing, and all the things people would need to be able to successfully transition into their own apartments. Camp Hope holds up to 50 people on any given night. We also started the Mono We Mono Program as a partnership with the City of Las Cruces in 2018. That was in response to a couple of things. People who are unhoused or precariously housed oftentimes need a little bit of extra help in supplementing income, but we also found that this happened around the time that the Panhandling Ordinance was repealed, and so we wanted to provide a way for people to work instead of needing to fly a sign, and so we wanted to advocate for this resource and also keep people close to services and help get people fed, get them paid, and have a good day's work. So on any given day, we assist 24 people who are unhoused or precariously housed going out to do day labor. Two of the vans that go out are servicing City of Las Cruces properties, doing landscaping, trash removal, other duties as assigned on those properties for the beautification of Las Cruces, and during COVID, we started a hotspot truck where we could immediately address unsanctioned encampments and help abate that in partnership with our outreach team and community partners. We also have a program called SOAR, where we're assisting people with social security disability applications. We're not a judge, we're not a doctor, we don't make those determinations, we just help people who are unhoused to fill out those applications to see if they are indeed able to access that source of income. It can be really hard to navigate a social security disability application, especially if you've been unhoused and been to doctors in different places, not used to using computers, so we provide that service, and that's another program that the City of Las Cruces has supported us in doing. Some of the future projects where Community of Hope is looking to expand and continue to address the needs of the unhoused population, we are going to be expanding into the recently vacated building, that was the Casa de Peregrino's pantry, so the food pantry has a new building, so we will be expanding into that other section. We are also looking to build apartment complex on the Community of Hope campus, close to all of our service partners, close to our day shelter, close to the overnight shelter that is Camp Hope, and we are trying to do that with some of our legislative funding and any support that we can find through grants and city partnerships. We're also looking to build a new El Caldito soup kitchen so that we can serve more people with food needs. Quickly, I wanted to address some of the myths surrounding homelessness. I often find that I get asked a lot of questions that can be repetitive in nature, and so hopefully want to address some of these at this time. So one of the myths is that all the people that you come into contact with who are homeless are violent, dangerous, and/or lawbreakers. When, in fact, a person who's homeless is no more likely to be a criminal than a housed person, with one legal exception, camping ordinances. Another thing I hear often is that homeless people are all drunk. Another thing I hear often is that homeless people are all drunk and drug users, they don't deserve housing, and that we are just enabling people. But research in fact shows that substance use is often a result of homelessness rather than the cause. Also, many of our grants mandate that we serve people where they are at. And so that is how we are assisting people rather than keeping people outside. I also get asked often if we serve a lot of people that are from out of, outside of this community and if we could stop doing that and serve only the people who are Las Cruces residents. The national average is that 75% of people who become homeless become homeless in the place where they currently reside. And so one of the things that I often think about is, you know, for every person that may present themselves at Community of Hope as homeless asking for assistance, there's probably somebody from Las Cruces in another city asking for assistance from that city and their homeless programs. Another myth is that homeless people don't want housing, that they choose that lifestyle. The fact is that being homeless is dangerous, stressful, and can be humiliating. Hundreds of people die in the U.S. from exposure every year. We've had probably three to four people that we've been serving already pass away from elements outside, vehicular incidents and so forth. And so we know that it can be very dangerous being outside. Remaining on the streets puts people at risk of violence, murder, assault, rape, and theft. And homeless people are often the victims of hate crimes. And with that, I am going to turn it over to our partner here, Logan with FYI Plus.
Hello, everybody. My name is Logan Howard. I'm the Manager of Community Impact for FYI Plus, which is Families and Youth Innovations Plus. My pronouns are he, him, and his. Today, I'm going to talk primarily about our housing services. I'll touch up a little bit on the auxiliary services and also touch on some referral points. And we do have some service menus if you have some further questions about any of the services addressed here or just in general. So our vision is to implement a responsive, meaningful, and sustainable community-based solutions that improve the health, safety, security, and well-being of members in our community. Next, I'm going to go into some of our housing services I had mentioned. So first, we're going to go over Transitional Living for Youth, or excuse me, Transitional Living for Young Adults. We do have two of these programs, but they do have some similarities across. I want to touch on some of those across the board. So there are some basic qualifying. So qualifying youth are 16 and a half to 23 and are at risk or are currently experiencing homelessness. The overall core principle of these is we really want to launch, prepare the youth to be self-sufficient, and we can house youth in these housing, housing places for up to two years. In these, in these environments, we can provide case management, including physical, well-being, mental health, educational, and employment support. And really, our goal once again is to launch into their next adult steps, which would be education, job, housing. So we do provide things like life skills, resume building, and other resources, which I'll touch on a little bit more as we go into each program. And both of these parts are, both of our Transitional Living for Young Adults do currently have openings. So the first one is My Friend's Place. And so My Friend's Place has been in the community for a good amount of time. You may have heard of it, however, there was recently a pivot. My Friend's Place is no longer a emergency shelter. Now we are providing Transitional Living for youth ages 16 and a half to 23 who identify as LGBTQ plus and who are also at the risk for experiencing homelessness. And I do want to emphasize the important point here, why we have the program who is specifically targeted at this audience. 10% of the youth population who is unhoused identify as LGBTQ plus, and 50% of the unhoused population is LGBTQ plus. So we wanted to make sure that there was a resource in our community that exists for this population. My Friend's Place is currently set up like a dorm, so there is a shared, shared living space, shared kitchen. We do provide, like I had mentioned before, a case manager. And the overall goal is for them to be self-sufficient. We assist with necessary emotional, mental, and daily living skills to succeed to their own. And once again, this program does have openings. And next, I'll go into Crimson Heights, which is, once again, another Transitional Living for Young Adults. So it does have the same age, 16 and a half to 23. The, the difference between these two is there's different site locations. So Crimson Heights, we have two separate concepts. So we do have one stationary, which is more of like an apartment style. And then we also have scattered sites. And the scattered sites are different locations across the city. So, and I'll show you a quick video of what the Crimson Heights looks like in the apartment setting. Let me show this quick video. Okay. And so, once again, that's our Alamo location. So that's more of the apartment style, which does have six units. And, sorry, one second, I lost where was that. And so we do provide here, it's not necessarily just for those who are aging out of foster youth, is opposed to the My Friend's Place location. This is open for everybody and currently this location is also accepting openings. Next, we have 12th Avenue. And 12th Avenue is a permanent supportive housing model. And what we do here is we provide safe and stable housing and other services to low-income families who struggle with homelessness or who are at the risk of experiencing homelessness. This has also been in the community for a decent amount of time, known as El Crusado. We currently have 12 units. We have 10 two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms. In this program, they can stay as long as they would, as long as they would like, but they do go through an annual renewal process. Case management is available but voluntary. So similar, if you look back to the Transitional Living for Young Adults I just went over, some of those do require that they go through case manager or life skills or they engage in some of those services. But at 12th Avenue, it is voluntary. And we do work closely with the Community of Hope on this project to make sure that we are prioritizing families facing homelessness to really maximize our housing efforts. And then we have the Valley Home, which I won't go into too much. The Valley Home is a housing service that we offer. However, this is a little bit different because we specifically focus on youth and foster care and we only accept referrals from CYFD. As far as 12th Avenue, we are currently at capacity. Once again, it is, we don't have any single, single unit houses. So this is more based on a family housing, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's a nuclear family. So it could be a generational family, you know, whatever that may looks like, but it's not a single individual. Next, I will go into a little bit about our public resources to assist. So FYI Plus, we are the state's first certified community behavioral health clinic. And that has happened recently. And what that has, what that has caused is that has caused us to expand our, our services and scope and also expand our relationships within the community. And within that, what we do is we are required, we are required and are honored to provide person-centered treatment planning regardless of their ability to pay or documentation status. So even though today I went over mostly our housing services, we do have an array of auxiliary services at our agency which are available and accessible to those who are unhoused or precariously unhoused. And some of those things are things like outpatient or therapy, targeted case management, and more. I would like to highlight two other resources such as Calo's Closet. Calo's Closet is at our location downtown, commonly known as LVP or the La Vida Project. And what it is there, it offers free clothes, but it also offers hygiene products, winter clothes, so if someone's looking for a jacket. And this is open to the public. We also have a food box that is available, same location, from downtown at the La Vida Project location. And we offer free food to the public and especially supports the precariously housing of our community. And once again, you don't have to be receiving services at our agency to access either the food box or Calo's Closet. So it's something that's open to everybody. And then next, really quick, just our role in housing. Our role in housing is to help fill the gaps of our housing needs of people in our community. And we are always and constantly looking for ways to expand our services and funding opportunities. So sometimes expanding funding, or excuse me, service, services looks at funding opportunities, but sometimes it looks like community partnerships with what we do with Community of Hope and Amador. And really quick, some of the referral process. And I believe these slides will be shared, but all of the, the resources that I mentioned, we have different referral points. So Valerie, Erica at 12th Avenue in Crimson Heights, and there's a QR code here. And also, once again, I do have service menus. So if you're interested or have any more questions on any of the programs or resources that I mentioned, please feel free to find me. And I will be happy to give you a service menu or direct you to our website. And that is all for me. And I would like to bring up Pamela from Amador. And once again, Chief Story, thank you so much for putting together this town hall and bringing us together.
Good evening. My name is Pamela Angel, and I'm the CEO of Amador Health Center. And before I get started with telling you about our clinic, I want to, and I think it's going to come up on the screen pretty soon, if somebody's doing the PowerPoint. I have to do it? Okay. Great, great. Okay. So first, I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and give you a different face of homelessness than maybe some of you think about when you think about homeless people. When I was 19, and this fits in pretty good with some of the statistics that Logan was telling you, I had a split with my family. I lived back east. And I was in love for the first time, and it was with a woman. And my mother gave me an ultimatum. She said, either be gay and go on your own, or stay here and be straight. Well, as many of you might know decades later, that's a difficult, you can't just make that choice. It's kind of, for me, it was always inherent within me. So I hit the road. I moved to Boston and I ended up homeless for a month sleeping, thank God, in the backseat of my car. So I was certainly one of those statistics from the LGBT, LGBTQ community, living on the streets of Boston. For me, in my homelessness, I had a brother who was able to help get me out of that situation. He got me a job at a really trendy cafe long before Starbucks was around. And from there, I've, you know, kept employed, kept employed and just moved my way up in the world. I did find another bout of homelessness. When I was 28, I moved into a house, into my own apartment in Albuquerque. And I had a big dog. And within a month, we got evicted by the landlord. So I moved into a friend of mine's carport and slept in the back of my truck, my dog and my cat, until my friend finally said, come on the couch. So, so I just want to show you that, you know, homelessness can affect anybody. And it's not, you know, the problem in the community is not homeless people when, you know, a lot of people talk about that. It's really not having housing and not having access and the ability to afford housing. And it's also can be discrimination as well. So I just thought I'd give you that, that little introduction to myself because it's been pretty amazing to go from those experiences when I was 19 to being in my 60s now and to be the CEO of a health center. So let me tell you about Amador Health Center. So our mission is to provide access to vital, integrated health and wellness services to our community and to promote dignity, dignity one life at a time. Our history, we used to be St. Luke's Healthcare Clinic from 1990 until 1998. At St. Luke's, we were located at St. Andrew's Church. In 1998, we moved over to the Mesia Valley Community of Hope Campus. And we were, and then in 2018, we moved to Suite D, which is, it used to be a family shelter. And we rebranded and changed our name to Amador Health Center. When we were St. Luke's, we were only serving, we were providing health services, but only to adults with no insurance. But in 2015, we became a federally qualified health center. We were able to access federal funding. That takes a lot of energy to keep. But we just had an onsite visit. Every three years, they come and they look at everything that we do. And fortunately, we did very well and we were able to access federal funds every year. That's when we changed our name to really let people know we're not, we're not just serving adults without insurance. We can actually serve everyone in our community. And our services include primary medical care, chronic disease management, medication management, particularly for mental health issues, STD testing and HIV, hepatitis C testing, and then referrals for treatment. Case management, care management, counseling, assessment and diagnosis, recovery and harm reduction services, gender-affirming care, hormone replacement therapy, pharmacy, laboratory, and Medicaid enrollment. We recently underwent and while we're undergoing an expansion, we're going to be adding six counseling rooms, a four-chair dental suite, and expanding our lobby. And that's going to be completed in June of 2024. And I hope you'll join us at the grand opening when that happens. Who we serve? We serve anyone and everyone regardless of insurance, legal status, or ability to pay. Our total, our patient data, 2020 and 2021, we really dipped. We were at about a thousand patients before COVID hit, and then we really dipped and now we've come back up again. We serve adults 18 to 64. We have 943 adults that we served in 2022. Elderly has increased to 138. Race or ethnic minorities, 779. Homeless patients are 33% of our current patients with 373. Uninsured is 29% and Medicaid patients are 46%. These are, I only pulled out certain statistics for this. We also do serve anybody from zero to all ages. Our outreach to, to the community, we have mobile services for people experiencing homelessness. We're part of the Governor's Demonstration Project for 2324. We were able to purchase a mobile van during COVID with some of the COVID funding. And then also, we've done a lot of COVID response throughout the county during COVID, mobile clinics at Las Cruces Public Schools and throughout Donaana County. And we have a vaccination clinic tomorrow in front of our Amador Recovery Program. On our Amador Recovery Project, we do harm reduction, syringes, naloxone, and Narcan medication-assisted treatment or MAT. And then we can also give people appointments to get naltrexone, vifetrol, buprenorphine, or suboxone. We do video and home visits. A lot of our, some of our substance abuse patients get into housing programs. And then we do case and care management, counseling therapy for them, video and home visits, peer support, self-help meetings, acutox, which is ear acupuncture. It helps with cravings. And then applications for income and housing support, transportation, to help people get to and from appointments and medication delivery. Our major funders are federal, the HERSA, which is Health Resources Services Administration. The CDC is one of our funders. We're doing a diabetes chronic disease management program with them and with UNM through Project Echo. Our state funders, the New Mexico Department of Health, the Governor's Office. We also have grants through UNM and NMSU and the Breast Cancer, Breast and Cervical Cancer Screening Program is also state-funded. And local, City of Las Cruces, Donaana County, and the Governor's Office. We have a lot of partners, of course, Mesia Valley Community of Hope, FYI, Ardean de los Niños, El Caldito. Donaana County Health and Human Services Department is a very strong partner. Casa de Peregrinos, NMSU, Burrell College of Osteopathic Medicine, and Memorial Medical Center Family Medicine, Department of Health, the New Mexico Primary Care Association, which gives us a lot of technical assistance, New Mexico Coalition to Homelessness, and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council. So here's our team, here's our website. We're stronger together. This is for, this is probably almost three-quarters of our staff. And I'd be very happy to take any questions that you have. Thanks for being here and we're, we really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. Thank you. to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Thank you again to all our partners that showed up to be a part of this. Homelessness, the police department's involvement, we're just one piece of that puzzle. And so it'd be very difficult to have this conversation without our different partners that are dealing with it and working in this field every single day. I want to paint the best picture I can about what we're dealing with before we get to questions, about what all the pieces are, what are the numbers. I suspect there's business owners potentially here, or residents, that have had negative experiences, especially with crime, and so those questions will probably come up. I want to give as much context as I can when those questions come up, so we can refer back. I'm going to give you some numbers of the number of people that were arrested or criminally cited, or criminally summoned, in 2022 and 2023. I'll leave them up there. You see the totals. They're fairly similar, and these are all people, this isn't all the people that were arrested or criminally cited. These are people that used 991 West Amador, which is the Community of Hope campus, and that is, not that we track arrests of homeless people who are homeless, but this is one way to kind of gauge how many people who may be homeless have been either arrested or criminally cited. Now, these cases are for misdemeanors and felonies. Primarily, you're going to see a lot of the same things. You're going to see trespassing, criminal damage of property, shoplifting. Those are going to be the big ones that you see over and over. The other issue that gets brought up, and to put some context to it, is the revolving door problem, or perceived problem, and there's obviously some truth to that. I don't need to put the names, but this kind of paints some of the challenges we have with dealing with the people who are actually committing crimes. Now, most of these people are going to either have severe mental illness, substance use disorder, or sometimes both. That doesn't mean that the crimes they commit don't cause harm, but what we find is that we get in this vicious cycle where they don't get help, there's no jail, and then the crime just repeats. So I have one person who's, in the last two years, this is from January 22 to December 23, has been arrested or criminally cited. When it says arrested, that includes criminal citations 77 times for a combination of offenses. And you can go down there and see that, there's a, there's a list. 102 people in the last two years have been arrested or criminally cited 10 or more times. Who use that address as their address? So that being said, that's why I give that, those two slides, to give some context to some of the things that are coming up. Now, there's a lot of challenges that are, that I'll be happy to discuss if the questions come up, that are outside the hands of any person in this room. And there are things that hopefully we can address and make it a better situation for everybody involved. But what we can do is try to do the things that are within our control, to go from nothing happening to something happening, to address that cycle. The New Mexico Supreme Court has a council that has instituted a pilot program for a competency program in a couple places in New Mexico. Donaana County, their district is one of those places. And so this is a diversion program to capture a lot of these, these numbers, and try to plug them into services as opposed to nothing. And competency is a big issue that, that we see with those numbers from the previous slide. And so this is one way to, to try to address whatever's causing that repetitive loop of committing crimes, instead of just letting it just continue with nothing happening. There's already discussions between several partners with New Mexico, or with the municipal court, to establish something very similar. This would start out probably as a condition of probation, to engage in services, as opposed to other things like jail. There's some things that have to fall in place before this actually happens at the level we want, but everybody's committed to starting something again. So we, we go from doing nothing to addressing things that we can. And the last thing I have on here is the Real-Time Crime Center, which is an initiative that we are pushing at the police department. What we're trying to do is leverage the resources, one, that we already have, things like the camera trailers that you saw earlier. The Real-Time Crime Center, to try to paint the picture, is a place where you would have operators that can look at those real-time, or the cameras that were just installed downtown, if there's anybody from a downtown business, so that we can monitor those, try to prevent crime from occurring, which would be the first goal, so that your window of your business doesn't get broken, and we can try to intervene. And then if it does, we can quickly try to deal with the situation, solve the crime, prosecute, and do the things that we, that are within our power. Same thing for officer safety. It provides real-time information to the officers about what someone's wearing, whether there's weapons involved. And so although this is on the broader theme of crime reduction, it does have a parallel or overlap with what we're talking about tonight. And so that's a lot of information, I know and I understand, but I do think we need to set the stage as best we can. So when we get questions, we can either refer back, or you have a little bit more information to go off of. At this time, if I could have my partners, if they don't mind, come up and sit in these seats, put you guys in the hot seat. So as we get questions, the appropriate person can answer the question, or maybe more than one person. Couple of things I ask. Dan already kind of went over what we ask for the questions. I will say this. I suspect that if there are business owners or residents who have had native experiences, there may be some frustration, and I'm okay with that. What I do ask is that we try to make this a productive town hall meeting. That's the goal. We're all here to try to have a discussion and be productive, and walk away with something more than we had when we started. So although I'm perfectly fine with frustration showing through in the question, I just ask that there be respect, especially for our guests who, who did not have to be here, and chose to be here because they want to be a part of the solution. They are a part of the solution, and we have to work together. So with that, I'm going to have Dan and Officer Velasco, who by the way, is our community liaison officer, and if you are interested in a neighborhood watch or a business watch, he's the guy to talk to afterwards, and helps coordinate those. With that, questions?
Here you go. If you would, please hold on until we get a mic to you, and I'll hold the mic.
Good evening, Chief. Good to see you. My name is Joe Pfeifer. My wife, Shawna, and I are the owners of Stryker Shooting World on South Valley Drive. We operate a business basically at the periphery of the whole Amador complex. Specifically tonight, we are here to address the illegal encampment that's been behind our store for basically the last four months and counting. We've had multiple issues, almost on a daily basis, with some of these folks. We start trying to be empathetic, and I genuinely understand that these people have their own issues, and I'm certainly not trying to make their life any harder, but at the same time, we've encountered multiple issues, open drug use, open defecation, prostitution, literally a whole litany of things. I haven't come here to just complain about them, but to basically, we're of the opinion, or of the feeling, that very little is being done from the business owner's perspective, to essentially help the people that are actually contributing to the tax base, and want to see an end to this problem. Not, again, trying to be empathetic with the issues that they face, but also too, kind of feeling that the, the city has almost taken more of their side than the business owner's side, not that anybody decides, but feeling something abandoned by the city in this regard.
Thank you for that, Joe. And I'm, I'm going to go back just to this slide, because I think, just so we can get a reference of what we're talking about. And I don't know if you'll see it on here. Can you see it on here, or is it further? Is it this area right here?
It's right there.
Okay, in this area, okay. Lieutenant Wheel, I'm sure you're familiar with that area. I don't know if you want to comment first, and I'll get more general comments.
So first off, I want to hear your concern, and it is a concern that our community outreach officers have heard time and again. With that, it's one of the reasons we came up with the illegal encampment tags. Not only in this area, but throughout the city, we've had the issue of these encampments popping up, and then addressing them when it comes to the criminal trespassing. So first off, it's making sure that they know that they're not supposed to be on that property, and then letting them know that they need to have that encampment removed within so many days. What we have discovered is that when the officers work those locations, we do want to work with our community partnerships, and so this is working hand-in-hand with the Community of Hope, and working with their outreach teams, to see if we can get them on that list, as far as making sure that they're looking for housing. But with that, then, what we find is that there are very limited locations where we can tell these individuals to go. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to take enforcement action, because we do take enforcement action. With that, what we've discovered is that typically, we want to give them at least a week of time in order for them to attempt to find a different location, and to remove their belongings from those encampments. Now, unfortunately, I think the chief had the slide where it showed the different numbers of individuals that have been cited multiple times. Unfortunately, when it comes to these criminal trespassing and the encampments, that's what we're running into, where a lot of times, we might be having them move from one area, only to move into yet another area where they're doing the same illegal camping. And so again, this is where it's having the community discussions to say, okay, we need more housing. Where are we supposed to send these individuals? As a police department, if they're on property that they're not supposed to be on, we will take enforcement action. That is our job. With that, again, it's making sure that we're trying to look at the bigger picture, bigger solution, as far as like, if I'm having them move from one place to another place, and they're still going to be illegally camping, it's not a bigger solution. Does that make sense? But with that, we will enforce the criminal trespassing, and we will cite where we have to cite.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Let me give, let me talk about criminal trespass just in general. So we have and will continue to enforce criminal trespass laws. There is, of course, a balance of trying to do it in a way that, one, the officer can justify legally and defend, but we will continue to do that. One thing we have to have with criminal trespass laws is warning. So that, it could happen a couple of different ways. One is with posting no trespassing signs, which don't always stay in place, but that's one way of doing it. The other way is that the officer has some proof that they've been given warning, that they are not to remain on that property. And so that happens different ways. If you're a business owner, you're probably familiar with our criminal trespass warning cards. The encampment tags is another way for us to try to document and show that warning has been given, so that if we do have to cite or arrest, that we have what's needed legally to back that up. So, in general. Go ahead, you have a follow-up?
So what is the number of tags that you're required to pass out to the same entities prior to taking action?
There's not a number of tags. Now, again, the tags are one, the tags are one mechanism to try to prove that warning was given, because we're always balancing, of course, and in New Mexico, there's a lot of, there's more constitutional rights in New Mexico than there is under the Fourth Amendment broadly in the United States. And so we have to be very careful that we make sure we protect ourselves as a department in the city as best we can. That being said, you know, we, when we give notice, we're not required to even give notice, per se. The tag is left because there's nobody there sometimes when the officers go. And so, of course, they can't stay there for two hours, eight hours, 10 hours, for people to come back. So the tag is a way to try to document that we have given them notice, that they are not to remain. How much time we give is ultimately in coordination between us and other people, and I'm open to discussion to make sure that we're being reasonable for everybody involved to try to help people. But there is no number of tags, or number, amount of time that's required. The other thing is, of course, this isn't an excuse to not enforce trespassing, but when we do remove them from one place, we get the call from the next place. And that's a logistical problem. They have to go, people have to go somewhere. And so that's just something to be aware of, that we do play that game, where as people move from one encampment to another, we of course get the call from the other resident for the location they went to.
Chief, we have a question over here.
I just wanted to say thank you to Community of Hope, Amador Health Center, FYI Plus, and LCPD. We are grateful for what you do for our community. With that being said, let's say you are doing what you, the most you can do for the homeless population, but once it reaches the court system, I feel like it's out of your hands, and I feel like the relationship between the resource, the community resources, and with the LCPD need to, I guess, build a relationship with the court systems, because once it reaches the courts, again, it's out of your hands. Another thing is, how are a lot of the homeless population knowing about the community resources that are available to them? And I guess, how can you help those who don't want to be helped?
Thank you.
Those are all good questions. I'm going to address the first part. And again, this is my opinion of the current situation, not necessarily even the opinion of the other speakers. And then I'll let maybe Nicole address the outreach team, and how we're trying to educate people about what resources are available. There's several issues at play when we talk about the court systems. Many of these issues are outside of the control of both city council, and even some judges. For things to change at some level, either has to happen in the state legislature, or even a constitutional amendment, which ultimately comes down to the voters at large. We cannot mandate in the New Mexico Constitution for people to receive services against their will unless they're convicted of a crime. Competency is a huge issue. When people are deemed incompetent, that case goes up to the district court. Once that's deemed, it comes right back to either magistrate court or municipal court, and the judge has zero discretion. That case has to be dismissed. And so these numbers we're seeing, not all of them, but a lot of them are people who have been deemed incompetent in case after case. That's a problem, in my opinion, but the solution is, is ultimately at the state level. And so in the meantime, we're trying to find programs we can do to say, well, let's not do nothing, because that's not going to work, and clearly not working. So let's find a way to try to plug them into sources, resources, services, incentivize it as much as we can. But it is frustrating, it's frustrating for everybody involved that we have this revolving door. And ultimately, if that, if we can get people to engage in services, and they are no longer either have a substance use disorder, or their mental illness is better controlled, that's better, that's a win-win for everybody, including the person we're talking about. And then Nicole, if you just want to address real quick the outreach team?
Sure. So we do have an outreach team that goes out and talks to people, trying to spread the word about the Community of Hope. And oftentimes, they, they'll drive a truck, so they'll come into contact with people who are staying in encampments, or who are wandering throughout town, or they might be asking for, for money. And we can put all of their belongings in the back of the truck, bring them to Camp Hope if there's an opening, or bring them over to Community of Hope where they can meet with a caseworker, they can sign up for housing. So a lot of the outreach we do is literally people going out into the field. We also, you know, try to do as many community engagement events as we can. We have a website. The outreach team also does presentations at businesses, and we have cards that we leave behind, so that they can hand those out to people that might come in seeking services. We try to get the word out there as best we can. Every once in a while, there are people who, maybe the first time, second time, third time they meet with a caseworker, are not interested, or in a position where they're able to accept assistance. That does happen. One example is, you know, there was a veteran that we were trying to work with for many years, would get shut down repeatedly, for whatever reason, whatever trauma. The veteran didn't trust people trying to give assistance, and our team just continues to try to build rapport with the clients as best we can, try to bring them to services, to housing, with, you know, their, their own preference in mind for, for housing and the services that they think that they need to be accessing. So it can be tough, but it's, it's not a, they said, no, we're not going to work with them. We will continue to try to keep working with them.
Pamela, you got something to add?
Do you hold it? Yeah. Do you hold it? Okay. Yes, so before I have my current job as Amador Health Center for the past 12 years, I had Nicole's job for 10 years. And so I've been on the Community of Hope campus for 23 years. And in that time, I think that the change in, in our population, and also nationally, I think the numbers have really exploded. You know, housing costs have gone up so much. There's a lot more homeless people in Las Cruces than there were 23 years ago. And also in that time, there's a lot of different, a lot more drug, drug and alcohol issues. Back 23 years ago, it was alcohol, alcohol, a little bit of marijuana, you know, but now there's, our whole nation has a very serious drug problem, and that, I think, leads to homelessness. So what we do, too, is we go out and we try to, with this, with our van, and we just got funding for just one year from the governor, we really try to build rapport, and get people to trust us, and come in for services eventually. But I think what Nicole and I have both seen is that there's an incredible But I think what Nicole and I have both seen is that there's an incredible change in people who are homeless, once they're housed. I'd say probably 80%, at least, of the people that get into housing, either one of their programs, or they are able to access elsewhere, they just improve, they don't cause as many issues, they're not out on the streets, they're not living without hope, you know, they're getting jobs, they're getting healthcare, they're getting behavioral healthcare, and they're doing it on their own with our help, but I think the, the common denominator is not having a roof over your head. You know, I know when I was homeless, when I was 19, I was hanging out, doing drugs and alcohol as well, I had no hope at that time. Fortunately, it was only a month, my brother got me into a really good job as a barista. When you're 19, that's a really good job. But, so I think a lack of hope has been very difficult, but once we do get people into housing, there's tremendous change, and, and it's people, you know, we've seen some people just make incredible changes, and we didn't cherry pick and say, oh, let's get him into housing, you know, because I think he'll make it. We just used to, and Nicole was the housing program manager under me at Community of Hope before she took over, and she, you know, it was, we have seen so much success, and it's, I think, it's what keeps us going, too, in this job, is that it's not just, you know, it's, there's a lot of success out there, and there's a lot of people who have turned their lives around.
Thank you, Pamela. I think Charlie has somebody lined up already for questions.
Yeah, for Joe, afterwards, we'll, we'll come down and we'll talk specifically about your situation.
Yeah, one of the frustrations to me as a local citizen, I think I heard the word tonight sanctioned encampment, did I, did I hear that? Maybe not, but one of my frustrations, and you have described it quite a few times, these people get driven from one point to another, to another, to another. Has a city, has anybody looked at finding someplace that's big enough to maybe create a sanctioned encampment area? Now, I know, I know that Community of Hope has their, their encampments over there, but the people have to follow the rules. A lot of people don't want to follow the rules, but something where these people could go, because they get driven from one place, they go to another place, they go to another place. Like, right now, over in the Community of Hope area, behind the Circle K on Hickory, there's a huge encampment, they've been building campfires right up against the walls, and there's a blackened marks on the walls, right behind the Cooper Law Firm, or Accounting Firm there, real close to the Community of Hope, there must be 10 or 15 encampments. And then, right behind Kaliches, this got to, we've got to have some places where, where these guys can go.
Well, and this is something we've talked about, where, you know, we've had this discussion, the problem is, when that place is selected and it's near somebody's residence, they're, they're screaming on the other end that it needs to go by your residence, so it's not as simple as, I wish it was, as simple as that. As far as saying, nobody's talked about sanctioned encampments, because those present a lot of problems. I'm not saying it's not a potential solution, but it's, it's not like it hasn't been discussed many times in depth. The only, Community of Hope has Camp Hope, which is very limited for a reason, because yes, there are rules, and they are required to do certain things while they're there. I wish I had an answer for how we could implement that, but right now, we have not identified a location that would fit that bill without creating a significant disruption to the residents around that area.
So, the community as a whole should be encouraged by all of the services now offered to the homeless, but what about the swarms of panhandlers that are infesting the various shopping plazas? A close observation suggests that many of those folks aren't homeless, and in fact, some are so emboldened, they're willing to snort meth or fentanyl right in public.
So, two things. One, my opinion, fentanyl has come to Las Cruces in the last three to four years, and is underlying the problems that we're talking about right now. If you zoom out three or four years, the problem was different. It was there, but it was different, and so, that underlies a lot of what we're talking about. When it comes to panhandling, again, a complex topic, because there's legal, legal ramifications, especially in New Mexico, and even under the tents are going under federal law. So, the Brewer decision is a decision that came down, Judge Brack, federal judge, in Albuquerque, when the ACLU sued for their panhandling ordinances. Ours are constructed very similar, and so, it doesn't mean that necessarily all panhandling ordinances are invalid, but it's very difficult to have an ordinance for panhandling that will stand up to legal scrutiny, especially in New Mexico, because of the New Mexico Constitution and the federal constitution. It's, it's seen as a First Amendment right, so if, if people can have a sign that says, you know, you know, they're raising money for some charity or some fundraiser, the Supreme Court does not see it any different if it's, if somebody's soliciting or asking for things. And so, when I say these things, you can agree or disagree, I can agree or disagree, but the reality is, ultimately, those things are at, at a different level than local government. They are. Now, on private property, going back to private property, that's the difference, we're talking about public, public property, people have a First Amendment right. On private property, they do not, so ultimately, it's up to those property owners or the managers to help communicate with us, so that we can enforce trespassing laws, because if they say, I don't want somebody on my property that's soliciting things, we will enforce that, because that is their right to do so, and that's the distinction.
Hi. Oh, that's loud. I guess my biggest frustration today is that this issue keeps being framed as the business owners versus homelessness. I saw so much of this in City Council over the summer, and I don't think it helps anything. I heard a lot of what the business owners went through, and I think, it was horrible, and something needs to be done, but I think that's completely separate from what needs to be done for the homeless, and like this gentleman brought up, they need, over the last month, I've been out there, late night, early morning, all the different camps, and there are many all around, I'm sure you're aware of. First of all, Chief Story, you're like the bright, bright spot in Las Cruces. You have made a difference, you showed us some statistics where we've improved. My biggest frustration is with these agencies that come here, and they give us their little brochure talk, and we can read the brochure. What we need to know is what's really going on on the ground, and Community of Hope, it's not matching what's going on on the ground, and there's a lot of accountability needed from Community of Hope. You've got some caseworkers who are real power hungry, there's a lot, there's a lot more to this, that's all I'm saying, and I think like that gentleman said, what are we going to do? We, the community, need to come together, and yes, there's, of course, there's many more homeless now, the whole country is having to deal with this, but we are not dealing with it in Las Cruces, we have to find some kind of solution, because chasing them from one place, it's like the NIMBY, you know, not in my backyard, and they have to go somewhere. So, do I have a question? What, when are we going to be able to make a plan for any of this, and accountability?
I appreciate that perspective. I, you know, right now, again, the police department, we have to focus on the criminal side of this, and there is a criminal side, there are crimes that are being committed. I, I don't know if anyone's willing to raise their hand if they're a business owner and have had incidents of vandalism, or multiple incidents of vandalism or theft, anybody willing? So, the, the problem is real, there's a real problem out there. Now, that overshadows some of the other things going on, but I think we have to understand the problem as best we can before we can even develop the plan. It's not like these things haven't been happening, but the frustration, although is very valid, we have to work together, because the police department can't do it alone, Community of Hope can't do it alone, Amador Health Clinic can't do it alone, and if we don't work together, there's zero chance of us having success, none. If we work together, it's not going to be easy, but we have a chance of making it better, and, you know, we are willing to look at any way that we can legally, without violating rights, help businesses and residents, and then hopefully, use that intervention from law enforcement, when warranted, to plug them into services, because the reality is, they're not going to, we're not going to put somebody in jail for six months for trespassing. So, if they're right back out in trespassing, again, that doesn't solve the problem for anybody, but if we interact with them, and we can use that as a way to connect them to any of these folks up here, that's something that we're not doing now efficiently, I can tell you, and that's one thing for the plan that we can do, is find every opportunity to plug people into services voluntarily, and at times involuntarily, when we can legally, so that there's a greater chance of success. And I tell the officers, we, we have tried to form a partnership with other people that do Medicaid assisted treatment. Like I said, fentanyl, in my opinion, and meth, has caused a lot of these issues. If I can get people into Medicaid assisted treatment for 30 days, 60 days, and they're not successful, which chances are, you know, not everyone's going to be successful, especially the first time, but that's 30 days or 60 days that they're probably not committing crimes, and that's better than where we are now. So, ultimately, the plan is, we have to work together, that's why everybody's here, and if we do that better, hopefully, the problem will get better along with it.
Chief, right back here.
Sorry, I'm hogging it here, guys.
Bill Matisse, I represent District Two, and I heard what Nicole said, and I, and I'd like to move forward, and maybe we have good lawyers, we have a big legal team, I'd like to bring that ordinance, you know, the panhandling and soliciting ordinance, it stood the test for 21 years, and then it was repealed in 2018, and the reason I say to target the panhandlers and the solicitors is, I know personally, several of them have just come up from El Paso, Chief Story, and are panhandling, and if we could get the panhandling and the aggressive people out of the supermarkets, out of Walgreens, out of the corners, then maybe we could address the next step, and that is with all these great programs. Pamela, I worked with you in 2002 as mayor, the program has grown tremendously, but as our programs succeed, and our ordinances can become law, and we can succeed in removing the panhandlers and the solicitors from the corners, I think that would be a good first step.
Thank you.
Just real quick, so we can get to the questions, but I, I agree with you, Counselor, and believe it or not, Counsel for the city, the Assistant City Attorney, and I have had these discussions, and the ordinances were not technically repealed, they're still on the books, but the difficulty is enforcing them, and there's parts of the ordinance that are probably still constitutional, and parts of the ordinance that are definitely not, and some that are questionable. So, the goal would be to bring to Counsel something that we think has already, maybe copy, you know, don't reinvent the wheel, something from somewhere else in New Mexico that has already withstood legal scrutiny, and if you haven't heard, the, the governor did address panhandling as part of her priorities for this session, so it is being worked on right now, Counselor.
Right back here, Chief, thank you.
Reach up in the air and grab a figure as to what this is costing the city a year.
I, I can't answer that, because there's, well, for the police department, obviously, we respond to a lot of calls that overlap with this, and so, it, although it'd be difficult to find an actual cost, I mean, we could probably find an estimate, I don't know what that total number is, and I don't think anybody here could provide that.
By the way, we're kind of running out of time, so we're still taking questions, but if you can be succinct with your questions, and we'll try to do the same with the answers. Anybody else?
I'm Becky Beckett, and I'm part of Neighborhood Watch, and one of our goals is to work in our area about solving our problem of, and this is, my question is the voucher system. We have people in our neighborhood that are with FYI and also Community of Hope, but they don't follow the rules. Is there some kind of an oversight that are checking on this, and before we have to call the police about something, or who's responsible? The contract with the organizations, or the private homeowner?
So, again, the police department, we have to be very careful that we do not involve ourselves with rule violations and only violations of law, but I don't, if Logan or Nicole, could you address that, Nicole?
If somebody's on a voucher program with the Community of Hope, caseworkers are going to the home, checking on the, the client, services are voluntary, the, the rules are laid out by the lease agreement, and that lease agreement is between the landlord and the client who is renting, so it would be up to the landlord to follow up with the lease, if there's a lease violation that might be happening, but if it's a criminal activity in the community, then of course, it's a law enforcement issue.
So, and just to be clear, if there's, if there's a crime occurring, call us, and we'll do everything we can within our power to deal with the crime. If you're having just constant issues that are rule violations, contact the landlord or the property management company, document and communicate with them, because that's your best chance of resolving it for, for those types of things.
Over here, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. A couple of weeks ago, we were talking, we were talking about getting people off the corners, and the problem then is, where do we put them? A couple of weeks ago, I, a fellow I know who's schizophrenic and constantly homeless, probably one of your fly, frequent flyers, had shoplifted a pint of ice cream, and the store owner was upset, called the police. The officer came, talked to everybody, and gave him a citation, but then had to let him go, couldn't really take him to jail for that shoplifting charge, but the guy was still left in the same predicament he was in before, he, he, I don't know, to my way of thinking, he wasn't competent, but letting him go, it, it just mystified me. I took him over to the triage center, and they took him in, and I'm wondering, is the, is that, is the triage center not useful to the police department in situations like that?
Well, again, if they're not going to be physically arrested, it would have to be voluntary for them. The triage center has been very useful for us, we've taken approximately 400 people to the triage center, all voluntary, since it opened. The triage center, as of right now, as, as far as I know, will close at the end of this month, so even if that was a resource, it's not going to be the resource for right now. But, I agree with you that there, it doesn't solve the problem, that's kind of what we're saying, is, we can cite all day long, we can cite every single day, that's not going to solve the problem, and we will take enforcement action when it's warranted, but that in and of itself is not going to solve the problem.
We have time for just a few more questions. Hold on.
So, I actually haven't attended and complained largely about the homeless population and their impacts to our business, I've kind of let Joe and, and the property owner kind of fight that fight, however, I have new concerns as a mother, and as a patron of daycare facilities, and grocery stores, and observations that I can't really ignore anymore as an empathetic person. For example, we are currently upstream of a major floodwater control, and a royal, in town, that is currently barricaded, like an apartment, they built an apartment under the bridge at Spitz and Albertson's. If we have a major rain event, how are we going to address property damages associated with that? Additionally, I have a few notes, hold on.
Let me, let me answer that one while you look at the notes. So, those areas that are either within city control that pose a, a public safety hazard, or things like EBID right-of-way, where they've already given us a letter saying that they do not want people to camp on the EBID right-of-ways, for several reasons, including safety, we address those all the time. I don't know, I'm assuming that was already relayed, the, that specific encampment under the bridge?
No, Joe, to take this off.
Okay.
And it's occurred in the past, so once again, we are removing the issue temporarily.
Right, and, and sometimes, that's what we have to do right now, is to deal with it each and every time it comes up, and we can't stop dealing with it, but when those things become known, and Lieutenant Weedle's, uh, community outreach officers, they do a lot, they spend a lot of their time dealing with those issues, as best they can and balance them.
So, is there a specific phone number, a hotline, that you can establish for concerned citizens to save in their phone, so that every time we identify a problem like this, we can communicate that, and it can be acted upon?
That's a good, so, there's not a specific That's a good, so there's not a specific phone number, but that does raise a potential idea, which is to work with city staff to possibly develop an app to serve that purpose because that would probably be useful. Katrina, I'm sorry. You got a number for that? Okay, I take that back. 311 Ask Las Cruces. Okay, and just repeat that for, if you're listening on YouTube or reading here. 311 Ask Las Cruces is an app, and you can use that to communicate those issues. And then, and that makes sense now. Katrina sends those to us frequently to address for a bunch of different situations. And we could potentially tailor something even more specific to this issue.
Nicole.
Just weigh in real quick. You can call Community of Hope as well for the outreach team and the Mono We Mono hotspot truck. And again, like you said, as it arises, they come out, like hotspot has gone out there and cleaned up many times, also trying to work with the business owners to monitor that situation as well. But you can, anytime Monday through Friday, call us and go out there and do some cleanup around that area.
Thank you. Do we have one more question? If not, I believe Chief and our guests will be up here for just a few more minutes to answer your questions if you want to talk to them directly. One thing I wanted to mention real quick, Chief Story, the last time he had a town hall, he was interim, but he is now chief. So we're very proud of that and glad. So Chief, congrats. And also, he's going to kill me for saying this, but Deputy Chief Eric Urenda is our newest deputy chief. He's back here in the back, one of the most knowledgeable and well-liked people. So we're glad to have him as a deputy chief now. Chief?
Yeah, let me just quickly point out who's here. All the police department personnel will be here for at least 10, 15 minutes so we can, if you have a specific incident, you want to talk about a specific issue, we'll be here. Our Officer Velasco in the back, who had the microphone, Community Watch, Neighborhood Watch, he's a go-to guy, Officer Klimick, who some of you may know, part of our community outreach, Sergeant Heschler, also our community outreach sergeant. You can discuss these issues with any of them, I'll be up here. And Deputy Chief Urenda, who's our operations, deputy chief oversees all our patrol sections, traffic, and SWAT. So with that, I appreciate everyone being here. These are complex issues, and the only way we're going to even start to solve them is if we involve the community more and everybody works together, as I said. So this is the first step, and I think this was productive overall, and hopefully it feels that way. Thank you again to our partners for being here when you didn't have to be here and helping us address this. Thank you.